If we're ready, then we will go ahead and call the April 8th, 2025 joint meeting with the Trinidad City Council and Planning Commission to order. And I believe that we will begin with the flag of allegiance for this meeting, so let's start.
Recording in progress.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any questions from the council or the commission on the agenda? Any changes that you'd like to make? I've seen none. Any changes to the agenda from members of the public? Okay, I see none. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, is there a second? All of us in favor? Need the commission to to vote on that as well, or no? Probably not. Okay, thank you. And at this point, we will then take items from the floor related to the joint planning commissions and council meeting. Are there any items from the floor? No items from the floor at this time. And with that, I don't believe we have a consent agenda for this meeting. Is that correct? So we'll just go on to tonight's primetime update discussion of projected planning related projects in 2025, and I'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you. So the planning commission wanted to get an update and a status report on several ongoing projects. I know the city council is interested in that as well. And we've had a joint meeting with the STR committee for the past several years. And so there was some interest in continuing that. And we can share some communication between the planning commission and the city council. And the planning commission wants the city council to understand what we're working on. And then it's also thinking about upcoming budget discussions, things like that. We need to think about some of these projects. I want to prioritize them. Other things come up, where do those things fall within priorities? So I basically just tried to provide an overview and a summary of some of the things we've been working on. The U ordinance has been a top priority, although I'll say I kind of it's getting very frustrating trying to reconcile the state second unit laws with with both coastal act requirements as well as the city of Trinidad's design protection. That's just a really big help match. And so I'm kind of thinking about taking a different tack. But anyway, that's been a big priority to try and get a second unit and try and provide some supportable housing, more affordable housing in Trinidad anyway. Such limitations and things like that has to be very carefully thought out. And then new application forms, that's something we worked on. Yeah, actually, under a grant, and we haven't ruled those out yet, but I guess no, last year. And staff's also talking about revising the schedule. So that might be a good time to rule out some new application forms and guides. They're mostly ready to go, like one more review of them. So I just wanted to provide those to you. They don't necessarily require approval. The OWTS program, so the city planner is the OWTS administrator. And when Jennifer was here, she and I really, we finally got that program pretty much fully implemented. And we've been trying to get her for many, many years, but it always, something else was always getting away. So that's nice. We've got, we've got that pretty well implemented. There's still a few old outs that we need to think about, you know, taking some stronger actions. And then continuing to follow up as permits expire, but Jennifer had that system pretty well set up. Then we're going to work on some updates to the ordinance, both for the AU for AU's and then also just based on lessons learned from the TS program. So that is an ongoing project, and then I know everybody's interested in that LCP update and general plan update. So I provided quite a bit of information there. We're working on a lot of that. I want to ask for it under, we're having the coastal commission. I guess kind of run out at the end of this year. And I am talking to the coastal commission staff about doing, doing a amendment, focusing on finishing the safety elements and background studies, and then getting some money. So I know everybody's interested in that. We're just got done with the the draft of the safety element that can then go to the coastal commission for comments. That one's really, there's a lot of new state laws related to the safety elements. There's the increase in climate change and extreme weather, sea level rise and bluff retreat. And it's also something the coastal commission is really interested in. And definitely some disagreement between the coastal commission restrictions on how to deal with some of those things. And so I have a feeling that that's going to take quite a bit of back and forth. One of the other issues that I wanted to point out is that one of the problems with, with the general plan update, other than getting pulled away on other things, is that the coastal commission has always insisted that they won't view the general plan until it's all complete and both ordinances are all updated. And so by the time you get through all of that, the first thing you worked on is out of date. It's really, it's really unmanageable. And that's what keeps happening. And so I'm trying to work with them. Trying to figure out some ways that we can do some, some individual updates. Because our, our LCP is the oldest in the state, so it's so that's a big project that we're working on. There are some general plan elements outside of the LCP update noise, overall consistency. And then there's some of housing related ordinances of the city council pass last year. And those are still pending for the coastal commission. And then trails. Trails is an ongoing big issue that's taken up quite a bit of time over the last couple of years. We're continuing to work on or exploring options for partial reopening of the Axalindran Trail. It doesn't look like they're going to have a full opening by one more weekend, but we're working with the DMT on that. The Glinda Trail, a number of years ago, the city council directed staff to those Glinda Trail, the impacts of cultural resources. We're working with that with the coastal commission and the social society on that. But I imagine that would come up again in the future. We also need to get a boardwalk fix in order to close that about to turn into a box. And then Rimway Trail, you know, obviously the reopening has solved the closure issue for the short term, but that's going to continue to fail. And so it's something that the city council is going to have to discuss probably in the not too distant future is, is what to do with that trail in the long term. Pursue repairs or close the trail, as has been requested by the Yarok Trail. That trail is a little bit different than Axalindran. With Axalindran, the city's more limited. Because of policy 69, we can't just go do repairs. We have to have a certain person, I should say, bail trail doesn't have the same restrictions, so you have a little bit more flexibility. But I do I would recommend that the city council conduct a government-to-government consultation with the Yarok Trail to better understand the reasons that they're requesting the closure. Because we don't have really good information on what the impacts are. Anexation. So the city received a couple of applications for water service outside of city limits. And also with the general plan update, we've kind of been talking about annexation a little bit, so there's some interest in learning about it. So we request a lack of it to make the presentation, so that's under the general plan tonight. And we'll be working on processing those applications, and we have to consider annexations as part of those applications, although we're going to be playing. And then applications, so permit applications as they come in. So I just, just got a new application this week for a small project, but there's this five house event. So it didn't prefer to turn out as a place of new project. So that's coming up. And enforcement issues always come up. Enforcement's difficult. It's, it's time consuming and be expensive. Beyond writing a couple of letters, hopefully you get compliance that way. But beyond that, it's, it's a little more difficult. So it hasn't been always a priority of the city, and it's kind of, there's, there's certain, certain projects that just, and then I saw a list of future agenda items that the planning commission has expressed an interest in.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, Erin, before we go to?
Sure, yeah, just, thank you, Trevor. That's a really great synopsis of the amazing work that you've been doing as our city planner and also planning commissioner, and the amazing work that we've been doing to try and move along this forward. As I was reviewing Trevor's staff report, a central theme popped up and really kind of backstopped some discussions we've had as a planning commission. And that is the use of words related to busy, time-consuming, competing priorities. There's, there's kind of a common thread to why these projects are continuing to, not languish is the right word, but not come completion. One of the things I've enjoyed learning about on the planning commission is that we are beholden to many entities before we can do anything. And so we have to get a lot of approvals and authorities. And these various governmental entities don't make the process easy for us. And I know that Trevor is using every ounce of her time, every minute of her time, and every ounce of her energy on everything the city wants to have accomplished. But to use one of Gabe's common things is that, you know, if we do one thing instead of something else, it's, it's literally expensive of a different project. So we've had a lot of things come up as a planning commission, particularly involving trails, and it occupied a tremendous amount of time, both staff time as well as planning commissioners' time. And so we haven't been able to make the projects that we would like. And, and one of the things that we've discussed as a planning commission a few meetings ago with Trevor is perhaps there's a need for the city to invest more in budgetarily the commitments and the SHN to be able to do more, right? And talking with Trevor, there, there is the capacity for them to kind of have some surge capacity internally for projects, but without authorization to bill and do that, they can't just go ahead and do that, right? We have a certain contractor services. So I guess the requests in the planning commission, because you guys talk about this tonight, is to consider that. That is important, that we want to move the things forward. We're probably going to have to invest some more resources into this because we are currently treading water. And as Richard has been on the commission longer than I, Cheryl, you've run it before. A lot of these things are ongoing for a long time. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment.
Thank you, Erin. I, I guess I would first say thank you to the planning commissioners for all your hard work. And Trevor, of course, as the city planner, very impressed with the report. And, and I do see a lot of progress since I was on the council or the commission four years ago. There's been quite a lot of progress made, so that's really good. But I also, as I read through this, kind of have the same, you know, thoughts about the resource constraints and trade-offs that have to be made. And I started kind of looking at, I don't know what the additional resources, like where they could be applied, but it does seem like there's some administrative tasks, for example, that it seems like Trevor's, you know, a highly skilled, you know, individual to be doing some of these things that, you know, she's doing, and, and that maybe we could parse that out, you know, and have some support that's to kind of get things that, I mean, I just, you know, some of the things I looked at were that the OWTS program, for example, like keeping up with permits and following up on enforcement. There's just some things like that that felt more, potentially more administrative. But, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the council and, you know, please share your thoughts and questions.
To say honest, that's what I want to do. Yeah, let me just ask you, Trevor, do you have other staff at SHN that could help you if the funding was?
We, we do. You know, there are a couple of times where we haven't had the staff to add some clothes and retain good people can be tough, but I think we're on upswing. So I would say, I would say yes, it's done.
Yeah. Well, I have a lot of general questions. I, I don't, we want to stay on budget.
No, I mean, I think we should circle back to, let's circle back to kind of what's the word, once we talk about priorities, maybe we can then talk about applying resources to those priorities. Seems like a good flow if that works for everyone. And then, and then let's, yeah, let's get the questions out there.
Well, I'll just jump right in there. Just wondering, what do you typically deal with that coastal commission? Excuse me. You know, you is that what works there? Invited people?
It depends, and, and that has fluctuated over the years. Tamara Yett is, is the supervising planner that I primarily work with. Now it's Rebecca. But Rebecca's been there less than a year. So they, they they specialize in different cities. So Rebecca would be the analyst that's assigned to turn it up. And they've had quite a bit of turn over the two of the years, but Tamara's been a constant. And Melissa is the head of the office. But it depends. So there's a grant manager that's someone different. There's a statewide planning unit. There's, you know, so they have, they categorize somewhat.
Okay, I noticed your statement on page one of your report said once our LCP is certified by the coastal commission, it will be somewhat insulated from changes in law. Are you speaking of changes to like the public resources code or would that be housing law?
That, that's specifically the second unit law. And that, that could change. Historically, the coastal zone has been excluded from all the housing laws. That is starting to change. But that, because once we have our LCP certified, like currently, I mean, currently, I, I would say we are buffered from the second unit law because our LCP doesn't allow a second unit to most part, and, and that's what we're starting. But then to try and allow them, we can't just default to the state. They're so, they're so complicated.
Don't, don't we have the ABU ordinance? Isn't that a second?
We have a draft ABU ordinance.
Hasn't been approved by the commission?
It has not been approved by the, and it now has to be approved by the coastal commission and Housing Department of Housing.
It'll be part of the LCP?
It will be part of the LCP.
Yeah, thanks. And so on page two, for people who aren't being compliant. Yes. How many are we talking?
I mean, I think it's only three or four property owners and, you know, a dozen properties or so. It's, it's kind of one property.
Page three. Your cultural elements instead of city staff needs to incorporate inventory and Yarok drafts, comments on the draft. Have those comments been made?
Yeah.
You have them all? Haven't been?
Yeah, we just haven't incorporated them into a new draft.
Is, is it a situation like the CECL where when people make comments, they have to be responded somehow or something different?
No, it's really, you know, this document's a work in progress, so it's, we would make the changes unless it felt like something that might be comfortably controlled or, you know. So what I do is, you know, I send them the draft, and they send me back comments, and I incorporate their comments, track changes, and then bring it back to the planning commission to review those changes. And then at some point, formal consultation is required, and that, that would be formal government-to-government consultation between the city council and
Right. So then on the the new studies, some have been previously drafted, need updating, and some are new studies. What are, what are the new studies?
The new studies were the visitor services study that I mentioned and the build-out assessment. So I think those were the new studies. The OPC grant paid for the coastal resiliency plant, and that would have been, that was one of the studies the coastal commission was asking for as well. So those are the new ones. Parking is one that we just need to finalize. That, that's a new study. And soils and the biological resources, the two other ones that
Has the coastal commission been good about providing money for those studies they require, or are we paying for those?
It depends. So this grant, yes, we have gotten grants to pay for those studies, and we haven't. But they, they do have money and they do want to help jurisdictions update their laws. So they are sort of, I don't know, put out English, to them that.
Yeah, then turning to page four, notice that both the trailer parks are some visitor ser- wondering the fact that they've in de facto become permanent resident parks. Does that help us with our low-income housing debt at all, or?
I don't think so. It's a really complicated issue. And, you know, I think that normally it's the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, that oversees our RV parks. But because they're in a coastal zone, they're subject to the city's LCP. But I think we didn't really always understand that. And it's not like anybody, it's not like they came to the city and said, hey, we're going to switch to long-term residents. It just, it just evolved. And so now, I mean, it's a tough, tough situation because they do provide some low-income housing, but I don't think RVs actually count as housing. So I, I've been trying to look, HCD is now formal, and I've, I've reached out to staff, but I need to submit a formal technical systems request to get some additional information about how, how we can deal with that.
Yeah. What about our STR ordinance? Something to note here, let's see. Let's see, because visitor service component, don't, don't they, wouldn't they go a long ways towards satisfying that? That part of it?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, it's not necessarily that the RV parks need to be visitor services. And that's part of the purpose of the visitor services study. You know, we, we don't necessarily have the technical information, like we don't do a demand assessment. But we, we did quite a bit of research into what's available in the Trinidad planning area for overnight accommodations, looking at pricing, looking at occupancy rates. And so, I mean, I think it shows that there are, I mean, visitor-serving facilities in, in the area. So maybe the RV parks don't need to be visitor services. But, you know, we still need to sort of figure out, you know, one's for sale right now. One does have some, you know, they do do some overnight, and also it might be something where maybe we just change the wording of the zoning and allow mix of both. You know, part of it is I'm trying to get in touch with the owners to see what they want.
You're saying you're right that all of the LCP is part of the general plan? But, but the general plan has more than the LCP.
Yeah, a lot of communities will have a separate coastal general plan and an inland general plan. Because Trinidad's almost entirely in the coastal zone, that doesn't make sense. But there are elements that aren't, that don't address coastal resource issues.
Right.
And so those are outside of the LCP. And even within individual elements, we have policies that we identify as not because they're not coastal resource.
I don't need to dominate all the time here, just one more. About the new Yarok Indian housing authority. Where, we do the initial CECL document on that?
So they, they drafted it, and that's what I was working on today. I actually just went through and editing it. And I'm hoping to get it published at the end of this week or early next week.
So is it going to be categorically exempt?
No, it will be mitigated later.
My cover's just for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Katie, Carrie, do you have questions?
I have a brief question. You mentioned five houses.
Can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
You mentioned five houses that are to be developed. Where was that on this?
So there's, there's one property that kind of, it's between 101 and West Haven Drive, sort of south east of Hidden Creek RV Park. And it's a three-acre parcel. Parker Creek runs through it. So houses are going to be developed on the southern part and the right area in the basement to save little space.
Is it, is it across the road from the Dusy Turtle Park or on the same side?
On the same side.
Got one more question about, you know, talk about a partial opening of it. People going to be able to get to the beach? What partway down Trail and you have to turn around and come back?
It seems like that's it seems like that's our only path forward at this point. Not sure that will.
So is that, and then, and then Hidden Creek is on Steph Jack, is that correct? Yeah, so is this property requesting water hookup?
Yes, they will be getting city water once the city will let them do it. And then on the side, touches.
Okay. Katie, did you have more questions about that? Okay, Carrie, do you have anything?
I guess I'm just curious about enforcement, like why is it so challenging to even get ahold of these property owners? And why can't they respond to your requests? And what resources do we have to, to support you to get the information that you need?
It's, you know, you had, so I think you have a pretty good sense of being of ordinance. And, you know, a lot of times you can get compliance with just writing the courtesy letter, maybe a second courtesy letter. That will usually get you compliance for most issues. But beyond that, I mean, you can start issuing fines. You can get court orders for best of the case at the attorney time.
I, you know, have some kind of minor questions that I think have kind of been answered through the Q and A. And I guess just to up level a little bit from that, I was thinking more about the resources and applying resources for getting the work done. And one other thing that occurred to me is, is all of this work, should all of that sit with the planning commission? So for example, I was toying with the idea that under future agenda items, you know, for example, as we talk about annexation, is annexation something that the planning commission should take on because it's land use? Or is it something that the city council should take on? Or is it some sort of a hybrid approach, for example? So I'm looking at like some of these, the other one I was curious about was land acknowledgement, for example. We might be able to take that off the plate. There was a land acknowledgement that was considered part of the coastal resiliency program. It's already been drafted. And, you know, we could consider that as a council and a future agenda perhaps in the, I think right now we're booked up through almost the fall, but, you know, if we can do it before that, great, but it would be out of ways. And so there's some things like that, maybe you guys can, you know, delegate up to the council to get some help. So I would like to mention that as well, in addition to the idea of more resources. So I think those questions are kind of minor. So I'd like to kind of hear from the commissioners if there's anything you guys want to add to this discussion. Before I go to Tom.
I'll say a few things. I'll just, I'll just resonate with what's already been said before. But Trevor's a one person man. And thank you very much for years of service. It's been a long time. But it's, it's really appreciated. And I think one of the things that we, at least I personally appreciate, and I know that you don't get to see very often, but sometimes some of the issues that we deal with can get somewhat contentious. And Trevor is very, very good at maintaining a professional attitude, which is extremely admirable. And thank you very much for that. That's always very important. While I have your attention, I would like to also just bring up, it's not necessarily a planning commission issue, but Trevor piqued my interest and, and I remembered it today. And that is that the city has a Trinidad emergency operations plan. And if you haven't talked about it already, it is way out of date. And this is something I think is extremely important in the realm that we're in right now with sea level rise, climate change, this, all kinds of issues that need to be dealt with. And this, this operations plan was last looked at in 2014. So it is way out of bed and I think it's extremely important. And just put out there that everybody who might be interested or be working on this, that we put a lot of emphasis on that because I think that's very important. And then one last comment, and this is just for clarification, Trevor. Just, just so everybody understands, the request for water service outside the city limits, people might look at that and say, well, why are we doing that? But it's because, I believe, that those residents are within the service area. And, and so it is possible that they could be connected. But I just want to make sure that was clarification out there for the public.
Yeah, and just a little bit more history on that because I think, you know, we have an annexation discussion and presentation coming up. But in 2001, the LAFCO laws changed to make it harder to look up outside of your own boundaries. And so the city has not hooked up anybody since 2001, except for, I think, a couple of people who had already had meters or contracts. And then, and Humboldt LAFCO was particularly strict in how they interpreted that law. They relaxed it a few years ago to make annexation more of, okay, you can hook up, but you have to agree to annex in the future. And so, and then when the Rancheria had their hotel request, we, we looked at water a lot and we developed policies for, you know, outside city limits. So, yeah, these guys are on Mill Creek Lane, so right outside the city, in the city sphere of influence. You know, I thought, I thought we could just go through that process and, but, but LAFCO is requiring that we look at the feasibility of annexation as part of those applications. So I do think, I think the city should consider annexation. I think regardless of the size it is now, it's going to be difficult. I mean, as you can see, dealing with all these various state laws and everything on the work here be difficult. And so, you know, I would encourage the city to consider annexation for a variety of reasons. It's, you know, annexing residential areas is not going to be, you know, a monetary benefit for the city, compared to land control, population, the sorts of things. I guess has more benefit. Potential for that to the north.
Question, one in Long Island, Mill Creek, or the end of the road.
That's right. Although the cross is actually from Berry Road over to Mill Creek. It's a weird, weird little connection over there. And there are some water pressure. It's the area of the system that there's some low water pressure. So we've asked GHD to run the city's water system on hold to look at hooking up those problems. But most people are already connected.
Right, and we stated LAFCO wants us to consider annexation, you mean of the whole street?
Yes, I mean, at least of the properties, but it would make sense to link the whole street. Because you don't want to just annex the whole.
We're going to be hearing more about that in LAFCO this evening.
Yep.
It's a Cheryl's comment and Will have a better idea really who's Bailey Wick that comes under plant commission or city council.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would be a good discussion to have. If we don't get to it in the annexation discussion tonight, then we can talk about it in future meetings. But let me take a pause here and see if there are any color comments while we, a few minutes, and then we'll come back and kind of summarize. Zach, I see you've come off mute. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Zach Weiner, I'm a local business owner. I own the Emerald Forest cabins and RV and the Trinidad Extended State RV Park off of, just, just up the road from you there, off Patrick Pointe Drive.
Yes, thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry.
I said, yes, we, we know those properties well. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, and part of the reason I'm joining is, is because of the LAFCO annexation discussion. And annexation is something that we have not applied for, but we're very interested in. For a multitude of reasons, water ultimately would be one of them. But we do, we do pose to add a monetary gain to the city through TOT taxes. And we, we produce quite a bit of TOT tax. So I think there could be a huge benefit for the city there. We also have water rights and we are currently working with the state of California for grants to upgrade our existing water plants that I think in collaboration would be much better to have that funding go to the city to, you know, produce better results for your plant upgrades. So there's a multitude of things that we're already working with, that we would love to work with the city. You know, our tax, our taxes go to the, you know, to the county of Humboldt. We don't know what happens to them. We'd rather support the community of Trinidad and see it grow and be successful. So I think it's a multi beneficial thing. And I can, I can speak more on that after LAFCO. I also heard a few comments and I want to get some clarification. I, it was a little hard to hear, but there were some questions about RV park use scenario, whether it's low income housing or nightly. What is the, I'm just curious, what are the city's goals? What does the city need or what do they want with RV parks? Are they looking for more affordable housing long term? Are they looking for more nightly?
You know, I think that's one of the things we're trying to look at. Certainly, the state is telling the city that it needs more affordable housing. But what form that takes, you know, we, we don't know. But visitor services is a priority used under the coastal act. So the coastal commission requires that we show that there's enough visitor serving facilities in the Trinidad, the Trinidad area. So that's what we're looking at in terms of your services study.
Okay, well, we, we offer both, both, you know, kind of what we call midterm to long term and then also nightly, you know, you know, short term type of accommodations. But, you know, definitely willing to talk with the city to, if there's anything we can do to help infill or help you with any of those requirements. You know, we're already doing it. So if there's something we can work with the city on, that would be great.
All right, let me take you up on that. Thank you very much. And as you mentioned, we will be talking some more about this too in the LAFCO presentation, so.
Yeah, fantastic. And I spoke with Gabriel Adams earlier today. He's got my contact information, email and phone number. So feel free to share that information if any of you want to talk. And yeah, definitely, yeah, curious to see what LAFCO says. And it sounds like another, another meeting, I don't know if it's with the city council or the mayor or what it is to, you know, look at these, these other things directly between us and the city, maybe at a later date.
Yeah, tonight at the city council meeting at six and shortly after the kind of regular agenda, LAFCO is going to do more of an educational presentation. So I don't feel that we'll get into too many specifics about different options. But certainly in the planning commission, in the past, we've had discussions about annexation just in the water service area. And there's actually a presentation that shows sort of like an A, B, and C kind of different options. And my hunch is that once we've had the educational discussion, then we'll look at those, that kind of presentation and determine whether we want to go any further with any of those options. But tonight, it's, you know, getting everybody up to speed on what annexation is and what LAFCO's role is in that. So thank you, Zach, and I'm glad we have your contact information because that'll be helpful as we go along through this process.
Yeah, nice to meet you all. I wish I could have been there, but I had some other pressing things in another state. But anyways, I'll be in touch. I will be there next week if it makes sense for me to stop by at all or, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items on the board, please, or excuse me, other comments.
Yeah, Thompson, I have a question about the Axon River Trail. I'm just, I'm trying to pay, I watch the planning commission videos and also the city council. So I'm trying to pay attention to what's going on with the trails and appreciate all the reports, you know, in the supplemental. Do we have to wait until we get a grant, I'm concerned about the political climate before we finish the Axon River Trail? I mean, I'm concerned about years in there to.
So, you know, I think we are looking at both short and long term projects and trying to, you know, do something small that the city can fund in the short term to get it open. And then the long term, be looking for grant funding for, you know, the larger trail project that was, was to me. Angela's working on it.
So do we have an estimated time, like in a year or two years to finish it or anything?
I mean, I'm not trying to.
No, I mean, we're, we're working on a grant application for that long term. In terms of the short term, you know, I don't know, we're hoping to have it this summer. And it's like, that's not going to happen. And so we have to get some other help.
I said, yeah, some of it's political, geological. So hopefully, yeah, it's not, I'm sure it's a huge impact for sure, the project. So hopefully by next summer, we can have it open.
Why, yes, I hope so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any other comments, public comments? Okay, then I'm going to bring it back to the council. One of the, one of the staff recommendations is to provide input on the projects and their prioritization and to suggest other potential projects. I think right now I feel like there are enough projects on the plate, on your plate. I do think that from a prioritization standpoint, I'll throw out some things that I think are priorities. And I'd love to hear from the other councillors if they agree. But obviously getting the general plan done, which we've, you know, made really good progress. I am, I love the cultural elements and the, they call it, there's two kind of optional elements. And, and while both of them are very important, if we can get the non optional done first, that seems like a priority to me. And OWTS, I feel like could be more program oriented and therefore maybe be taken off Trevor's plate to a large extent if we can hand that off to a program manager or some program or administrative resources potentially. I'm just throwing that out because I don't have that type of detail. I think the council needs to continue to be really involved on trails. And we need to be kind of held accountable for that based on the history over the last couple of years. So I would put that, you know, on our plate as much as possible. And as we just discussed, annexation, I think it's TV, like we need to talk about what's really, what are we, what's the scope of it? And then determine where that should sit so that we don't add more to the commission's plate. Let me just see if there's anything else. I mean, enforcement is really the city manager and the city council, so that's, that's also us. I think, I don't know if that helps, but I think that's kind of where my head is at. Other councillors, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, my, my thought is that it's kind of, it's, you know, getting, for example, if we were able to get more staff from SHN working along with Trevor. It's kind of a good news, bad news scenario in that the good news is that get more things done faster. The bad news is the money runs out faster. So ideally, we'd want to optimize, you know, some kind of assistance to you that gives us the most return on our investment. Whether that be a city staff person, like Angela, for example, or somebody on SHN staff.
Yeah, I was going to mention that we're going to have our budget discussion day. So next month, the city, the council will discuss budget. And then also it sounds like there may be some grant funding that we could look at to add more resources. So maybe it's a combination of budget discussion and grant funding. And then to Bryce's point, is it, you know, existing staff or new staff will we hire? I don't know if our plan is still to hire a new program manager. Is it, okay, so yeah, so that program manager in the past, Jennifer Hakinen, was that had that role. And she, I know she's did a lot on the subject work, you know, the OWTS, so that could be helpful there. I just want to mention the EOP, the Emergency Ops Plan that Richard Johnson mentioned. The city manager that I have been approaching and especially, I guess, I would say, general house, the city manager, the OES team to try to get them to help us revise that plan as opposed to pass. So we're trying to get some outside resources to help us with that. It's a big job. It's an over 200 page plan right now. So no, nothing to report at this point. We're just working on it. But I think between the council, the planning commission, and also the community emergency response team, sir, we can, and the city manager and staff, we can, you know, tackle that a little bit next year. So I agree with you, Richard, that's where I have to take. Anything else to add, councillors or commissioners?
I just have a question. Where does the ABU ordinance fall under your priorities? Because in the relatively short time we've been dealing with this as a planning commission, as Trevor alluded to, the state's requirements and rules change. And we have missed opportunities to secure things the way they were. And now we're beholden to new regulations, you know, specifically the height is one of the biggest misses that we had, maximum structure height. Because we couldn't get it done soon enough, we're now beholden to a new set of rules, which is what it is. But if that's a priority to try and get that option out here for affordable housing and to do that, we'd like to hear that from you, where that kind of falls, or at least I would. The other kind of just statement I'd make on grant funding, grant funding is phenomenal and I'm a huge fan of it. statement I'd make on grant funding, grant funding is phenomenal and I'm a huge fan of it. However, there have been times when we have had to prioritize things because of expiration dates and grant funding ahead of a different project, right? If we don't finish anything by a certain date, we're gonna lose that money. And so again, we're trading one for the other. And so I just wanted to make that awareness out there. And sometimes it might be worth it, sometimes it might not, but that has been, I've felt a challenge from the planning commission standpoint several times during my tenure.
That's it's a double edged sword. On the ADUs, I guess I'm in the past thought that it wasn't a huge priority for the city because we don't have a lot of, you know, build out capabilities in the whole space to create ADUs. And it's also fraught with, you know, sometimes disagreements about where ADUs should be and whether they should be, you know, allowed at all and so forth. However, my understanding is that the state, you know, laws kind of pushed us to develop ADU ordinances and to proceed with it. So that's why it became a higher priority. Otherwise, for me, I don't think it would be as higher priority, but, you know, what do you, what do you think, Trevor?
I mean, I think the housing affordability in Trinidad is an issue. And I know there are interests from from people in having ADUs. I think, you know, dealing with septic is, you know, a huge limiting factor and I don't see a lot of potential for new construction ADUs. I think the the it's more potential for converting existing structures, whether it's accessory structures or carving out part of existing. Is probably the the biggest potential, but you know, what like one of the things that worries me is you can add on an ADU, so you can put a second story ADU on. So with the ADU laws, you have to approve them ministerially. They can't be a public review. There can't be any discretion. And so they meet the requirements. And so you can add a second story, 20 foot tall ADU, no review. Now, I just don't think that's been worked.
Another thing, excuse me, if you had another closet essentially, then your septic system.
Well, no, not, no. And so bedrooms, well, it depends on how you define bedroom. Building code does not require a closet for bedroom. The building code definition is very, very broad. And so I think we need our own definition of bedroom, but we have, you know, in Trinidad, because of septic limitations, we have a lot of large houses that have not very many bedrooms. And so, you know, I think that's a concern in terms of, you know, how many offices and dens can be converted to bedrooms. But how many more people is it really? I, you know, it's a tough issue. And the the county has recently relaxed their standards for requiring what they require for septic systems for ADUs. And I think we need, I think before their interpretation was too strict and I think it's a little too loose and I think we need something.
Yes, you deserve it. It seems to me that we have the authority as a general office city to pass ordinances, you know, for our health, safety, and welfare. And, for example, and we can do that without getting approval by the Coastal Commission, but it doesn't count towards their requirement. They can require us to do an LCP, which may or may not include ADU section. We have our own authority to, you know, authorize or regulate ADUs. And we could start doing that, it seems to be, even before the Coastal Commission certifies our LCP.
I think not, because in general, creating an ADU requires coastal development. That would be development under the Coastal Act. So it would fall under the. But I think that, like I said, I started switching how I might try and tackle this and it might be a health and safety issue kind of because cities are allowed to carve out areas where we allow ADUs and where we don't. And I think Trinidad would be an area, if it were larger, you would carve out Trinidad as not really allowing ADUs or rolling specific situations. So I think trying to use that in terms of coastal resource issues, aesthetics, views, parking, septic, water, all those things, I think we can maybe use that to say we can't just allow ADUs anywhere in the city without discretionary.
All right, we're getting closer to the top of the hour. I guess I want to reflect really quick back to the commissioners. Do you think ADUs are a high priority, number one? And then number two, any other quick things you want to add?
I think ADUs are 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 a priority. It's certainly something that we've focused on. And as Trevor outlined, there's a lot of challenges in Trinidad when it comes to ADUs, but there's a lot of pressure from the state. Something happened there. Regarding to other things, the only other comment I guess I wanted to add, or maybe it's more of a question for the council was I guess ties back to the trail subject. I appreciate you guys trying to do a more active role on that. I think that's more of a, it's sort of become more of a political issue than it has a land use issue in a lot of ways. And in that vein, the outgoing city councillors, two of them were assigned government to government contact with local tribes, but they're now gone. And I don't want that to just fall flat because I think moving forward, we're gonna need to continue that contact that government to government setting, so I want to spread it, keep that alive. Because it's gonna be, it's gonna.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the council will go to representatives from government to government and that rotates to some degree. We have some consistency, but we definitely will continue to have those meetings, so thanks for for that. And I did capture that there was a request to do that related to that of GAGU, your apply maybe to the Rainbow Trail. I'm sure the rancheria would like to discuss that as well. Okay, I am insightful. Do you want to add something, Richard?
I was just gonna say this.
Yes, yes. It's been really interesting. I want to thank everyone. I love the FJ. Thank you for all your hard work on the planning mission. I really respect what you do. I respect what Trevor does and all the hard work. And hopefully this has been helpful. We'll continue to discuss it and and yeah, have future meetings. So thanks, everyone, and we're gonna shift gears there in about a minute and a half to the city council meeting. Thank you. Yeah, I think we're ready for our next meeting, which is our regularly scheduled city council meeting. This is Tuesday, April 8, 2025. And we have no closed session tonight, so go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledges and allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One white shield under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'll start with approval of tonight's agenda. Councillors, are there any questions or comments about tonight's agenda? Any changes to the agenda? I need to ask for public comments really quick and we will do that. Thank you. Are there any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Any changes that public members of the community would like just to ask? Right, back to the council, Bryce.
Approval of the agenda.
Victor, Katie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next, we have approval of the minutes from March 11, 2025. Are there any questions or changes on the minutes?
I have just a comment.
Yeah, can you please use them?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're gonna share them tonight.
Thank you, Dave, for the minutes. That's a hard job trying to caption these lengthy meetings and keep it cogent and short and to the point, I really.
Right, are there any public comments or questions regarding the March 11 minutes? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion. I'll move to approve the minutes for March 11. There's no second. Katie, I think you're heading over to that first and then all those in favor, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, the passage unanimously. The minutes are approved and recorded. So next we have council reports and committee assignments. Would anyone like to volunteer to go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
I represent the city on the HCO mission and at the last meeting, we hired a new executive director, a gentleman by the name of Brendan Bird. That's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Bryce. Maybe I guess we'll just move this direction. Okay, how about you, Terry?
I was five minutes late to a meeting and I'm still getting an acronym, right? It's the Redwood Economic Commission. And although they, yeah, I didn't, so I will get an update for you guys.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick one and it's actually about LAPCO, so I attended the March 18 LAPCO meeting. It was a mid-year budget review and and also a review of what made Municipal Water District Service Review, the MSR Municipal Service Review and their sphere of influence update. Which is updated, that's updated about every five years, so it's significant to spend time on it. We had two meetings on it. There were just a few general questions about some of the rates and and number, whatever it's number miscellaneous things and infrastructure upgrades. And relative to the greater Trinidad area, the discussion that was most interesting centered on a request from Supervisor Madrone. And he was asking for LAPCO to provide data relating to the rancheria, the rancherias' new hotel project. And their plan took up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. He was asking for data related to that to be developed, especially related to any development impact that the project might have. But staff recommended holding off on doing studies because that connection decision has not been solidified. It's not been approved at this point. So it would be, they felt that it would be a use of staff resources ahead of a project that's really actually been, is is approved to go forward. And then my opinion that I had in the meeting was that additional stakeholders would also need to be there because, you know, to scope a project, a data capturing project like that, where we're gonna go out and do an analysis, I felt that we needed to scope that analysis and that to do that, we would also need other parties at the table, including the rancheria, who I thought would want to be there and be part of that that scoping exercise, as well as, you know, the city of Trinidad. So I felt that the council, the city council here, would want to know that that was gonna take place and would want to weigh in on perhaps what data is collected. So the board did agree to accept the MSR and the SOI with the understanding, though, that the rancherias' connection to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District would be brought back to the board, pardon me, I believe, before a final decision. So so that didn't get accepted and filed the SOI, but with the understanding that we could have a discussion at future board meetings. And that is it for me. Let me just ask if there are any councillors who have questions about anything that was just presented. Okay, are there any public comments or questions about what we just talked about? All right, seeing again, I think we would, oh, please, would you mind coming to the podium, please, for the folks online? Thank you.
I noticed that you mentioned LAPCO and in that, and I'm a resident of Mill Creek. And we applied for a water connection. And I didn't know that it's gonna be readdressed later at meeting with them about the annexation of the whole neighborhood, the annexation of the two people interested in footnotes.
That's a really good question. So we are gonna have LAPCO present. It's gonna be coming up in our agenda in a few minutes. And we're gonna have them present and then we will do some Q and A. I don't know if we'll make, well, no, I do know that we will not be making any decisions tonight about annexation. It's more educational, but it is laying the groundwork for that. And we did talk a little bit about it in our last meeting with the planning commission, specifically about the water request that you've made for your, yeah. So we did talk about, we didn't make any decisions, but the council is now aware and if they hadn't already been, so. Yeah, so we could talk about it some more. Thank you. Any questions or comments about the committee reports? Any others? Okay, all right. Well, great. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our city manager to give the staff report.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight for the, my staff report, we have CSA four meeting that was rescheduled from late March to this week. It's gonna discuss all things fire, fire related services, volunteer fire, CAL FIRE. We're going to try to determine a feasibility study, study and develop the scope of work. And then send that study out, see if we can get some quotes and then when that comes back, try and determine if it's something we want to focus. So we will have more information on CSA four meeting after this week's meeting. So an update maybe next month or certainly by June. Water update, for those of you who are interested, Coleman Sandon Engineering is now finally off the books of March 18. February costs, which we didn't have at the last meeting, were $12,400 in the final mark invoice through March 18. Was $6,932. Our new interim CPO, Eric Sanders, came on board March 19. That, March 19 to 31 was a $1734 invoice. So that gentleman is $4,000 a month, all inclusive. So all, whether he comes up at least once a month, all the reports are all included in that $4,000 contract. So I think we're in a better spot going forward. I would like to announce that Kyle Shipman took the T2 exam and passed, so we have yet another T2 on the bench, building contact hours in advance of trying for the T3 exam. We have one gentleman approaching his 1,000 contact hour and trying to get a test tape for his T3. So hopefully, in the course of the next several months, we will have a T3 in-house that will be able to operate as a CPO and 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 provide the necessary requirements that we need for them to. So we won't need the interim going forward. West Haven Intertight Project is moving forward. We take a long anticipated plant specs and engineering updated projects, costs to complete from the West Haven Water District. We're reviewing that information. And we hope to be out to bid. I was thinking by mid-April, but I think we want to be out to bid by mid-May at the latest so we can take advantage of construction season and mid-summer construction start sometime late July or early August. A bid document is being prepared for the windows and rock repair. We've had a couple of folks come by already to give us a bid, so we're looking forward to seeing what those costs are and getting window and rock repair project underway. We are working on the FY 2526 budget, which is scheduled for our main 13th meeting. So trying to get those details nailed down and get something that we can get to the council and have a discussion about our budget for the next fiscal year. We are continuing Emergency We are continuing emergency operation plan discussions with County OES. Earlier in the planning commission meeting was brought up that our last EOP was twenty-fourteen. I think it's important to note that that document was helped, was created with help from County OES during an effort when they were standing up what was called the NEMS and SEMS program, which helps us operate in emergency conditions. I reminded the county of that, so they are looking for resources to help us update the current EOP. There's for sure a few changes in the regulations that require update, so they have reviewed ours and agreed that probably needs a little bit of an update, and we're looking forward to that help. The Edward Sign Street update, finally found an engineer who thinks that he can find a solution to help remove the signs. Still waiting for him to return the contract, so. The good news is, we found an engineer. The really difficult news is he hasn't yet returned the contract, so hopefully we can get that back from him pretty quick, and hopefully in the next month or so, we'll have a set of plant specs and engineering for you all to review and approve to remove the signs from Edward Street. I'll happy to answer questions if you have them.
Any questions from the council or Joe? Bryce?
Joe, where are we with the demonstration pickleball match?
Well, thank you, I meant to update that too. We had laid some tape down. Unfortunately, the weather played havoc on that pre-march surface, so we're going to reline that out, clear now that we have some sunny weather out in front of us, and we've shaking his head, we have a net on order, twenty-eight, I think it cost about twenty-five dollars worth of nets, so it's not a big expense, and once we get that restripped and we get the net in place, it's ready for pickleball to be played. So I would say within the next week or so, we should be able to, if those of you who want to play pickleball, come on out and give it a try.
Joe, and when they do come out, give it a try, is that when there's going to be a noise?
We will, yes, we do have a sound barrier in office. Yes, we will. Take sound measurements.
As I recall, we kind of tabled the item until, you know, some council members wanted to hear what it actually sounds like, and so the neighbors can hear also before we actually approve it. That's why the tape instead of burning starting.
Yes, there is, there are a few neighbors who are actively engaged in conversations about the pickleball court and are interested in when it's going to be coming online, and they will give us feedback on, sure, based on prior conversation for them.
And then it's come before the council.
And then we will come back to council with a more complete report and some empirical measurements for noise.
Are there any questions from the public regarding the staff report? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please come up to the mic, you know, mine, just so they can hear you online, thank you.
This is Jeff, very little Edwards. I was simply going to say I was talking with a friend of mine two days ago, who's really, really into pickleball. He does not go around here. He's tournament qualified and all that stuff. And he says this is a very big issue in many neighborhoods where they have it, and it's, you know, people like it, people don't like it. His, he told me you can get special balls that have lower loudness, lower decibels, special for areas that are close to residents. So I'm not sure if you guys know about that, or can you get some for the, for the test?
We can do that, the problem is enforcement, you know, we're
Yeah.
That's not challenging with pickleball, as everyone thinks they're going on the pro tour.
You're right, and there's also, I think we were, there were special paddles too, but we're not sure. Or maybe you can use them together, and then it's absolute silence. Okay. Other, let's see, oh, I wanted to ask if the Lieutenant McCall was, he's not on tonight.
He's not, I reported him, I reported him.
Okay, thank you. So that's in the packet for those who want to review that. And then, Joe, I know you went, Trevor was going to give us some input. Was that part of the staff report, or is that?
That is a staff report, that's correct, yeah, that's on your
Trevor.
Fire severity agenda item there.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and?
Oh, well, that's on your agenda, although I will say.
Oh, it's on the agenda, okay, which item is it?
Item five.
It's number five, and you consider moving it, that's practical.
Okay. Alright, so what I will do then is, when we approved the agenda, we probably should have approved the agenda with the change, so I'm going to take us back to that really quick. Because what we'll need to do then is, council is to, if you agree, is to move item five to item one.
Let's, can we make it out of the LAFCO presentation there?
Uh, yes, so we will move it to item two.
Thank you.
Move item five to item two. And then continue with the agenda as, so. And let me ask, are there any members of the public who have an issue with that change to the agenda? Alright, back to the council for, I will go ahead and do this since I started this. I would move to change the agenda to move item five to number two. Otherwise, the agenda will stay as stands. How does it stand?
I say it.
Carrie, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for letting me do that bit of administration. And with that, we are, we have completed staff report, so we're going to go for two items from the floor. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. Individual comments will be limited to around three minutes or less. Please direct your comments to the council as a whole. Maintain decorum and avoid personal attacks on staff, members of the council, and/or other members of the public. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. So with that, are there any items from the floor? Mr. Hakener. And also, if everybody wouldn't mind, I know some of you have been great about this, giving your name and your, where you reside, if you're comfortable doing so.
Mayor Hakener, resident of St. Louis, Trinidad. I'll keep these two items brief. One, thank you to city staff for continuing to use and make people aware of the new messaging technology we got with our new website, the email notification system, the text messaging. That's one of the big things that we got out of that system, so I'm pleased that we're using it. The second is something I've brought up repeatedly since we came out of COVID and began having hybrid meetings, and that is the audio/video quality of the services we are providing, both to city staff to look and redo minutes after the fact, the public participating. We had a gentleman earlier, I guess this is a comment both as a constituent of yours and as a member of the planning commission. This was great for what it was designed for, which was amplification of room. Leave long bones in technology, the live video conferencing. The city needs to take the next step. It's not a huge financial lift, there are systems out there. I've offered them past to help with this, but if you have never made the time to go and watch a recording after the fact, I encourage you to do that. It will fund the auto-quality, does not provide opportunity for participation from the public, it does not provide opportunities for remote work to the patient by planning commission members, city councillors, in the capacity that makes, you know, the government accessible. So you need to take the next step, that's your role, that's your obligation to the public. There's a lot of systems out there that are standard on to do both video things, a lot of tracking in the room, that's called the owl, you can set those up. Please, I'm imploring you, begging you, whatever else, and I'm going to repeat this to you ad nauseam until progress is made. If you thought it was a bandwidth issue, that hit from scratch, it is not a bandwidth issue. Let's do more, thanks.
Thank you. Other items from the floor? Okay, I see no more, so we were going to move on to tonight's consent agenda. And council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda or any changes? Alright, any public comments regarding the consent agenda? Back to the council for a motion.
I'm going to approve all of the consent agenda.
Whoa, it was a tie that time. I'll give this one to Carrie.
I say it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so as we mentioned earlier, the agenda is going to move forward with item one as our and that is a discussion presentation of the Humboldt County Local Agency Formation Committee, which is what LAFCO stands for. And this will be regarding, a presentation regarding LAFCO's role and functions regarding the annexation process. And so I'm delighted to introduce the Executive Officer, Colette, and she will come and take us through this.
Good evening, Mayor Kelly and council and staff. Really appreciate the opportunity you invited. So, yeah, I just wanted to generally provide information about LAFCO. And again, my name is Colette Sanchi, I serve as Executive Officer of LAFCO. And we can get started, we have some slides that will just generally provide background on, you know, why LAFCO exists, the competition, overview and authority. So, and then we'll get into process with regard to the annexation process, and if there's any for out, please don't hesitate, or take questions. Alright, so about LAFCO, and hopefully everyone can see this star right. So LAFCO, it stands for Local Agency Formation Commission. It's an independent regulatory body established by the state legislature in nineteen sixty-three, and really to oversee the organization, formation and development of local agencies, and boundary changes, service expansion, community extensions. And it all came about as part of post-World War II and just the growth of popular interest and development that was occurring at the time. And so the state came, the state legislature created LAFCOs in each county. And so there's fifty-eight LAFCOs overseeing cities and special districts. Again, the formation, the changes in boundaries, and the provision of services. And we'll talk about composition, but the LAFCO has county, city, special district and public representation. I wanted to just speak about the commissioners' role. So this comes right out of the Cortezing-Knox-Hurtsburg Act, I won't read it, but while serving on the commission, because you have county board supervisors sitting on the commission, city council members, special district elected board members, and members of the public. So broad representation and while serving on the commission, those commissioners are expected to be served with independent judgment and placing the interests of the public as a whole above those of their agency that have been there. So we talked about the LAFCO hats, and so you can, that was actually the perfect timing. So we're talking about the LAFCO hat and, and just the need, you know, when commissioners are attending LAFCO meetings and making decisions that come before the commission, that they have this broader respect. And the next slide is related to LAFCO composition. Again, we have a seven-member commission, two county board supervisors, two city council members, two independent special district members, and one member of the public, and each of those categories has an alternate member. Oh, there are sixty-one member agencies in Humboldt County, so seven cities, and there's fifty-three independent special districts, and the remainder are dependent special districts, and a variety of different types, whether it be community services, district, cemetery, or water districts. And LAFCO has both regulatory and planning responsibilities and functions. So I'll start with the regulatory, and that's, LAFCO operates under the Cortezing-Knox-Hurtsburg Act, that's in the government code, and those are the government code sections. LAFCO, again, oversees and reviews and improves changes of organization and reorganization for that operations, district formations, annexations, detachments, consolidations, new powers activation, so a community service district may be providing just water, wastewater, they want to provide recreation, that takes a process, takes a LAFCO process to develop a plan for services. LAFCO wants to see that there's a plan in place both for the staffing and that there's the physical ability to provide that new service. And also extension of services by contract or agreement. So cities and districts providing water, wastewater services outside of their boundaries by contract. Also requires LAFCO review. We can talk about that a little bit more too. Though I want to stress that LAFCO is not a land use authority. So cities and counties have land use authority, they have the general plan, they develop land use designation and zoning designation that regulate those land uses. LAFCO cannot through its actions regulate the use of land, property development, or subdivision requirements. When a city comes forward with an annexation proposal, they have pre-zones, that annexation area. We cannot change that pre-zone. It's, we look at what that will, we look at the type of pre-zoning and the type of services that would be supplied, so that type of usage, demand of, demand of services, those types of things, so we cannot change the time. So as we, factors considered, this is just a short list with regard to any change of organization and reorganization proposal. We look at consistency with county general plans, specific plans, local coastal programs, current probable future need for services, growth and cost adequacy of services, and just going into the different types of boundary changes. So also, you know, at the core is an agency jurisdictional boundary, that's the area where they have authority to govern and provide services. And then LAFCO also has its own planning boundary that is adopted by LAFCO, and it indicates the probable physical boundaries and service area of a local agency. And so we'll go through the different types of spheres that LAFCO establishes, and we establish the spheres of influence. That's part of our planning, part of our planning authority through municipal service reviews. So spheres of influence, and this is a little hard to see just with the lighting, but this is the Manila Community Services District on the council. And their jurisdictional boundary is quite large and covers their service area, and so their sphere of influence is coterminous and matches their jurisdictional boundary. And that, that is to LAFCO, to the district, to the public, that there is not anticipated growth or extension of services. So we look at that through the municipal service review process, and that sphere is updated every time we go through that service review. My expanded sphere of influence, so this is Trinidad's adopted sphere of influence. And we reviewed the municipal service review for the city of Trinidad, I think four years ago, and did a comprehensive look. We did make amendments to the sphere to to reflect the out-of-agency or the existing water service connections that are provided out of city limits, and those were pre-existing connections prior to two thousand, and we'll talk about that, that's prior to two thousand, cities and districts did not need to come to LAFCO to receive approval if they were to connect out of city, out of jurisdictional boundaries. But from two thousand on, it would require LAFCO review and approval, and we'll talk about extension of services versus annexation. So this shows, the yellow is the sphere of influence for the city of Trinidad, and you see that it's larger than the jurisdictional boundary or city limit boundary. And so this says to the public, to the city, to LAFCO, that there's areas that either are receiving public services now, which is the case, and that may, you know, be appropriate for annexation in the future. And then here's just an example of a contracted sphere or reduced sphere. Uh this is for a small water district um outside of the city of Arqueta. And this area that's in the, in this contracted sphere um is not receiving services and is largely TPZ and will not receive certain levels of services in the future. So if there ever is a boundary cleanup, like we do recognize that the LAPCO boundary change process does require it, you know, is costly. And so um it's more in the future if there ever was a separate annexation, you know, potentially this detachment could be um brought on as part of a combined application and and a boundary cleanup. So this sphere also kind of helps um document this potential boundary change. Alright, with that, that, so we talked about that LAPCO's oversee boundary changes and as part of the regulatory function and also has that planning function of municipal service reviews and spheres. And so I thought we would talk a little bit more about the application process. So um again, um any annexation, um out-of-agency services, activation of linked powers or sphere amendments that are not part of our just our typical updates would require a LAPCO agency or member of the public. Next slide. So how to initiate an application? There's two ways. So resolution of application adopted by affected local agency, like a city or special district. This is the preferred method because this, as the service provider, they would go through first their process to review the, the boundary change um and also do the environmental review associated with that and and service lead agency request. And then a second way is by petition, either by property owners or registered voters within an affected area can come together, say this area, if you want to either annex or um we want to form a, a new district. And so we have received uh registered voter petitions that are most typ, they're typically uh for uh by district formations that we've received. Um so with regard to an application, we have the resolution or petition that would be part of the application, the actual LAPCO form. Uh a plan for services is part of the application for uh an annexation. And that really lays out um how services are going to be provided, um the, the infrastructure needs and um and how they would be funded. Pre-zoning, again, this is for city annexations only, would require um that to be part of the city's uh a map and boundary description of the annexation area that gets filed with both the county and state. And then the environmental review and and then ultimately the LAPCO processing fees for cities. And for city annexations, there's um a master property tax sharing agreement for all the cities already in place between the city and county. So that really is true. And um just tips for successful applications, working in frequent coordination with LAPCO and other regulatory agencies that would have um some sort of action associated with it. Public outreach and engagement really to build um understanding and support, um uh completing the environmental review process and all the other discretionary act. And this is a process flow chart that you absolutely cannot read, but I can speak to it somewhat. So we talked already about, you know, the last, like the pre-application is pulling together all the components of the LAPCO application, a plan for services, bringing it forward to planning commissioner, city council, all of those steps. Once it's submitted to LAPCO and there's a resident, the council adopts a resolution of resolution of approval, requesting LAPCO take action on a proposed annexation. Application is filed. LAPCO staff has thirty days to um deem the application complete. And we initially, right away, do uh agency referrals to county departments and other interested and effective agencies. And then in that thirty days, deem the application complete and also do the notice for the property tax exchange process and coordinate with the city and the county. And then um once the application is deemed to complete, we have a uh a number of days to then take it to hearing. And so between that, between that period, we do our noticing to affected landowners or registered voters. If it's less than a thousand, um if it's more than a thousand, we do a one-eight page display ad in a local newspaper that um you know, advising of the public hearing and the uh opportunity to attend and provide comments either before during the hearing. If it's less than a thousand combined registered voters and property owners within the proposed annexation area and three hundred feet um adjacent to, we do mail notices. Um and so that likely would be the case. For district formations, it's typically affected property owners and and potential voters. So we'll do a, a notice in the And so then we'll hold our hearing. So that notice goes out um at least twenty-one days before the public hearing um on the annexation. LAPCO staff, we, we notice it. Now, we have our agenda. We have a very detailed staff report. We make findings and determinations. Um a staff report um and and recommendations to the commission. And um and then so we'll hold that hearing. If the commission approves, it triggers a thirty-day reconsideration period. So during that thirty days, we wait to see if any members of the public or any um agency um submits a request for reconsideration. Um and I've only received one in, in my life, in my time with um with the LAPCO. And so um that reconsideration would really stop the process if one was received and then the commission would um then notice the next meeting to consider that reconsideration and either change or amend their action. If there was no reconsideration received in that thirty days, um we would then notice for the protest hearing. And so the protest hearing is held as a separate um another twenty-one day notice goes out, mail notice to property owners, letting them know that the commission approved the annexation proposal and that um there will be a protest hearing to consider um written protests from, again, that only affected landowners and registered voters within the annexation area to be able to uh protest and potentially terminate um the LAPCO's action for annexation. And so the protest proceedings, um I, I typically hold the hearing. The commission has delegated that authority to the executive officer so I can hold the hearing in the affected territory or nearby. And um and then so the protest thresholds, that's all in here, but very fine. And the protest thresholds are basically if less than twenty-five percent of the landowners who own twenty-five percent or less of the assessed value within the annexation area protest or less than twenty-five percent of the registered voters within the annexation area protest, then the commission's action stands and is valid and it is completed. Um if more than twenty-five percent of registered voter or landowners and less than fifty percent protest, then it goes to an election and that election would be held just again for the affected territory and it would be just the registered voters at that point. That would get to vote, yes, it would go on the annexation. And if more than fifty percent of the registered voters protest at that hearing, it would terminate the LAPCO's uh So the protest hearing is really the final, really, opportunity for landowners within and registered voters within the annexation area to reverse this decision. Otherwise, um I take back the, the the fine, you know, the, I bring back a resolution confirming the um the protest proceedings and finalizing the annexation to the next commission's meeting. We go through com, any condition compliance and then record the annexation with a certificate of completion with the county recorder's office and then file the annexation with the Board of Equalization. And so then that um area is officially with the the district. So that's the process and Alright, next slide. Um I wanted to just really quickly, so activation of powers, we, we won't, I won't speak to this too much. Again, this is if a district wanted to provide a new power that it doesn't already provide. Um those types of actions come before LAPCO and it's a separate application. And then out of agency services, again, so for Trinidad and and for several um cities and and districts, there's um water services and even wastewater services provided outside of agency boundaries. A lot of that occurred, um you know, decades ago. Um and at that time didn't require LAPCO approval. And um you know, water lines get, you know, water lines get built and and there's a tendency to connect if there's infrastructure there. So um now there is a process for LAPCO approval for any new out-of-agency or extension of services. Again, annexation, keeping the boundaries clean um and making those service areas a part of the jurisdictional boundary of an agency is preferred um and is encouraged. But we do recognize that there are times when, you know, local conditions or circumstances um do require, uh you know, annexation isn't feasible and um an out-of-agency's um contract or agreement between the two parties does make the most sense. So that's this one. To that, um we talked about this in length, our planning function, seeing municipal service reviews and other special studies. Next slide. And um here um is just the next, you know, municipal service reviews, I think I just wanted to touch on here, are very comprehensive. They used to be really small documents when LAPCO first started um really highlighting what, what services, when an agency was formed and just the, the basic um the basic items. But now it's really used as a tool to identify service gaps, opportunities, services, looking at disadvantaged unincorporated communities within or adjacent to spheres of influence. Um just trends or um demands uh for this and hazards. It's, it's a comprehensive document. And so we post our municipal service reviews on our website and you can also find City of Trinidad. And we do special studies. Um it's, there's not a lot of funding to do, um which should we have more funding to do uh more regional-based uh special studies, but that's why we tend to, we're starting to do more regional and municipal service reviews so that we can look broadly at service uh needs more comprehensively on a regional basis. So we've done this for like fire services um and other other um regional type reviews. Alright, with that, I am available for questions. Thanks for having me.
Alright, thank you very much. Are there council or any questions for this session?
Yes.
So why, why is annexation preferred over out-of-agency uh?
Well, one is once it's within the boundary, you don't have to do a LAPCO. So um and you have um, you have, you're able to um, you know, as a, as a jurisdiction, be able to apply your ordinances and municipal code to that area as well, which is important. Um but yeah, each, each out-of-agency connection has to come to LAPCO. And so that's a lot of applications. It really cycles um just the ability to serve in a area um because that process drags on.
I didn't quite catch, uh like if there's a vote, if uh two twenty-five or fifty percent of protest in Trinidad, uh would it be the entire city that voted or just the area that?
Good question. It's just affected territory. So it's just the annexation area that gets the protest vote.
Right, so it could be like five houses, six houses.
Yes, and so that's where we're doing the outreach. I mean, when it's a small area, that you should have a really good sense of the level of support from those property owners and registered voters that are residing in that area. And um because what's the point of going, moving forward with the costly annexation process if it's just gonna get to a protest vote and then get denied?
Right.
So doing that early outreach before an application even gets submitted is really critical.
So um special districts can also, not just cities?
Correct. So they have their jurisdictional boundary and they can extend it as well.
It seems like the special districts are a little underrepresented on LAPCO.
Yeah, there are lots of um, there are a lot of special districts in the county. And um yeah, it's just how the composition is set up.
Do they take turns on LAPCO or?
Yeah, it's really based on interest. It's challenging. I mean, we've had some special district representatives from um Fruitland and, you know, they drive forty-five, fifty minutes or more to LAPCO meetings. Um so uh we've had some longstanding special district representatives and and some really good, actually, you know, a lot of uh issues there actually.
For the districts now?
Right now, um Heidi Benson, Mount Leopold Community Services District. Um and um oh, Trangani from Penexley Community Services District. And then my alternate is David Cowish from Canlayo Community Services District.
What's the legal counsel for LAPCO?
Good question. That's Ryan Fox. Uh he's with the mission.
Say attorney's fees.
Yeah, and so that it does occur where um you know, items will come forward to annexations and he will recuse himself. Uh and it's not often that um they need to be involved in anything specific to, you know, the annexation or proposal review. It's like, so he will recuse himself and if we needed to have um separate counsel, we would get back.
Thank you very much. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, uh just to go back to something broad. Go back to something, uh, the area being annexed, they can do a protest vote, but for example, the city of Trinidad could not.
Yeah, it's just that affected, yes, you're right. So the residents within the existing city do not have are not part of the protest vote. You're, you're correct. And so it's the annexation area um is, you know, the property owners and registered voters within affected territory that are being considered for annexation are the ones that get the notices and then also um get the ability to protest.
You know that annexation is preferred by LAPCO when we begin to offer, for example, water services uh within our, our service area, but outside of our um kind of the district, I guess. Is, it's preferred, but is there an opportunity for Trinidad to some, you know, to meet the needs of the, of the residents to, for example, provision water and then with the idea that the council would review uh annexation of that area later, like?
Good question. And the law more or less suggests that, but for more of a health and safety. And so it's really And so it's really set up to be where in times where there's a failing septic system or, uh, some other, um, you know, immediate health and safety risk, that the property owner and the service provider can come straight to LAFCO, receive approval for that, for that connection in anticipation of annexation. And so then, you know, the, the service provider can come back in twelve months and annex that, that property. Again, it's, it's piecemeal, like property by property by property. So if there's a, a way to, you know, comprehensively look at where, um, you're providing services and, um, in annexing an area and do the outreach with all of those property owners and residents within that area, that's where bigger than for your buck, you deal with, you know, the planning that's associated with that area and not doing piecemeal connections.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, oh, sorry.
I guess I have a question, you had a, a map up there with some proposed scope of influence, right? So do you have an, an estimate of how many households or certain groups that are included in your surveys that you?
Uh, good question, I don't have that in front of me, we could put that together, there is a broader, so the sphere of influence says it includes the whole, um, water service area of the city. And, um, maybe, uh, Trevor could speak to the, the work that, um, that's been done, um, by your staff to, um, evaluate the, the water service area and that. Uh, but the sphere of influences are really cleaned up and primarily that, um, the core area near the city that didn't extend all the way to your source, um, facility.
But annexation doesn't have to include the entire service?
It doesn't, so you could, uh, also, you know, based on property owner interest or, you know, an area that makes, um, sense. As a sub area.
I'll go to the commission next, since we do have a planning mission here, any questions regarding annexation? Because I know this is something that I've been looking at as well. Okay, uh, and then, yes, let's go to public.
I had some questions.
You mentioned the, sorry, what's LAFCO fees? Uh, can you say something about the size of them or how near the return?
Uh, for annexation, sorry, actually. Um, so I think you said three thousand, that was thrown out of agency service extension. Um, and, uh, for annexations, uh, we request a deposit, um, four or five thousand typically. I think we have seven thousand, it's a very complex. But we do, it's a deposit, um, our policy is full cost recovery, so we track, you know, our time processing the application, doing all the staff reports, um, all the noticing, all the cost for the noticing, the postage, the, um, the media, you know, the, the, um, cost for putting it in the newspaper and, um, taking it to hearing, during the protest hearing and then during the Board of Equalization filing. The Board of Equalization filing is based on acreage and those costs can, um, be a couple thousandish. So, um, you know, we can estimate costs, um, as you get closer, but typically I would say by the time it's all said and done for an annexation closer to ten thousand.
My name is, my name is Mike Kavanagh, I'm a resident at, uh, three nine five forty road. It also borders on Mill Creek and, uh, we have applied for it. Originally, we were told that that was possible last year and a half or so, so, um, now it's shifted over to the fact that they want to annex the whole neighborhood, which is five or six houses. And, uh, so we were led to believe that there was a possibility of individual, which thirty years ago was impossible. So a little bit, uh, stuck, um, as to where to go now, so my, I guess my main question with the this, the city, if I understood it right, um, so you can do this without LAFCO on an individual basis? Or is LAFCO controlled the individual ones rather than the annexation of?
What I heard, and I, I probably should maybe defer this question to you, Trevor, since you have the most experience, but I, or I believe I just heard was that individual hookups to water could be approved by the city with the idea though that we will evaluate annexation and of that individual property and then in this case, in the case of Mill Creek, we have other, you know, other houses and you point out who may want a hookup, so we might look at annexation to do the whole neighborhood. So that's what I heard and, and Trevor, maybe you want to weigh in here?
Well, so, um, both annexation or an individual connection require LAFCO.
Yes.
Um, and if, we could do an individual connection with the idea that, you know, future annexation, but we have, so we have to show, my understanding is if we're not going to annex, we have to show why it's impractical or infeasible at this time. And so that's, that's the idea of this GHD study to, to look at water pressure in that area and whether it is feasible to hook up everybody, that's one step. And then I think the next step would be the public outreach, because if everyone's like, no, then there's no point in, in proceeding and then we would proceed with just the individual.
So it's possible that the next step in the Mill Creek situation would be the outreach that is done by the city or LAFCO?
I think we would ask for some help with, um, you know, reaching out to people and materials, but it would be the same issue for us, I think. And, and we might ask applicants for some help as well, then maybe have a meeting.
So we're, uh, putting forward any more money, um, to find out that it's available. So but we, um, itself and the other party, um, continuing on the basis of individual, um, is that how we talk to, to you? Is that we would like an individual hookup?
Well, you know, we have, we still have to do the labor to see if annexations. So, you know, maybe, maybe it might make sense to start the public outreach before we do the GHD study. Uh, we could do, we could do that.
That's what I was considering, it all came back.
Yeah.
With a lot of money. Well, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Jen Pierce, I live on Mill Creek Lane on the way track. I'm another applicant for, um, water and I've been pursuing this for several years now, trying to get source. And, and I was curious about that, uh, says this, uh, near a general city will need to collect additional deposits from the applicants to cover the costs of the study and staff have reached out to the applicant. So I have not been reached out to. Um, I've made my three thousand dollars, which I thought was going to be the permitting cost to apply to LAFCO. Apparently that is not true, I don't know what that three thousand dollars was for then. And I have not been reached out with any of this, it's been completely on me to come and try to like hold this up. Uh, and I would really, um, like to see, um, Mike and I be able to get special uh, dispensation for water with the idea that we will be pursuing, um, annexation in the future. So I believe that was already the plan, where the, we are in the first section of districts that would be annexed, I believe. Um, and so if that is already in the plan, that you're planning on having that annexation, I would really like to see us get water. I am one of the few residents on our way track that does not have city water, that have a five hundred twenty feet from my house. And I do understand that there are, um, issues with water pressure, however, these issues have already been studied and recorded previously before I even applied to LAFCO uh, for the city. And if that was the case, and I'm now having this be hinged on whether or not there's enough pressure, I don't understand why the city of Trinidad took my money knowing that there's not enough pressure to give me my water services. So I'd like that to be addressed, if you would.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to respond right now or shall we hold on this for now?
I mean, some of that's probably beyond the agenda item, I would say we, we did have GHD look, I, I did send you an email, but it wasn't the, you know, that was listed on your application. Um, and, um, GHD did, um, do a study and a memo to show that hooking up these two connections is not going to be the service area.
Okay.
So it would be that.
Okay, so, and I wanted just to kind of clarify the purpose of this particular agenda item tonight was to bring us all up to speed on what annexation is all about. And that's so that we can bring items to the council like annexation of Mill Creek and the council is educated about what that means and what the process is. So, um, we're probably not as, um, uh, prepared to handle specific, you know, situations and as well as we might otherwise be. So we, but we are well aware of the situation and, um, staff and, uh, I will, I think we'll talk offline and, and come up with a plan and an approach for that, for those specific situations, if that makes sense. Um, I do want to, uh, Mr. Johnson from the commission, have, did I get some questions about annexation?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, the first question is hopefully very simple and that is can we get either posted on the website or somehow get copies of your slide deck? Uh, that logic diagram is very informative and it's difficult to see and I think it would be useful for all of us to, uh, have copies of that so we can kind of digest that a little bit more. Uh, my other question was, um, it was always my understanding, and, and I'd say it this way, my, my understanding was that any annexation, um, of area had to be contiguous with the boundaries of the city is, you're nodding your head, so that is.
That is, um, yes, I did not cover that, yes, that's important for cities. Uh, and in very limited, uh, situations can cities have non-contiguous territory? Uh, and like the city of Arcata has, um, a tract, um, uh, a forest tract, uh, ownership that is part of this, their city limits and it requires special legislation. So yes, for cities it must be contiguous, special districts can act, actually have non-continued.
You say special legislation, is that at the county level or at the state? Thank you.
Right, did you?
Yeah, I just said, yes, I could just sort of, I have another comment I would like to back up. From Frank, good point, um, does the entity losing the parcels have any recourse protest? Because it's always a financial loss, certainly have a county's tax base. But I just have four quick ones, okay, that's, that's my first one, uh, and then does LAFCO as part of the, the package provide any financial information on the gain or loss to the entity, in this case the city, if we're getting it? Uh, third, I think is probably fairly obvious question, but I want to confirm, it's all about the approach for annexation. You can't simply annex just water services, it's all services that you provide. It's in there, and then the fourth relative to Richard's last question, and to continue the boundaries, uh, my understanding is the charity set of annexation is no longer legal where you go along a very narrow right of way and then lose out. And I just want to confirm that, so the case as well.
All right, so for the, um, first question regarding, um, you know, so for a city annexation, it would go from unincorporated territory, um, that is regulated by the county to incorporated city, um, regulated territory. And so, um, the county does not have the ability to protest per se, like property owners and landowners do, but they are, um, they will get notification as part of the agency referral and, um, they would review the application. I, I typically will get letters just confirming from planning department, public works department, you know, that they reviewed the application, they don't have comments or that they do have comments. They, like public works, for instance, you know, they very much try to see that full road lengths. They are included in the annexation area, that they're, that the annexation boundary isn't splitting the road and one half the road will be retained by the county and the other by the city or that full, um, intersections are included, so they are keeping an eye on, you know, the bound, the proposed annexation boundary, planning department, they may have comments. Uh, but otherwise, um, unless, uh, there was some significant concerns by the county, like revenue loss with, uh, um, I, they would, they would protest something like this or, or submit a letter of objection. Just the first, um, the second one was originally regarding, uh, just within the review of the annexation that, that the financial or the financial impacts are considered. And that's something that LAFCO will review. Um, some cities actually will, um, hire a consultant to do like a fiscal impact analysis. We don't require that and we're not going to do that per se, um, but that, that can be done. Um, generally, you know, commercial uses, um, with sales tax and those revenues with our, um, uh, positive benefit to a city, whereas residential, existing residential is more of a, of a journey. Um, with regard to, um, the, the fiscal considerations, but LAFCO will, you know, there will be a plan for services, it will, um, review how services will be provided and the financial ability to provide those services, so for water and wastewater, let's say, it's fees for services. So at the very basis, services will be funded through, um, for utilities, uh, utilities. Other property taxes, there would be a property tax exchange agreement between the city and county and a portion of the one percent of the lorm that is now going to the county will um, be transferred to the city. The third, um, is with regards to city annexations, um, is it all or nothing? And typically, yes, it is all or nothing with regards to providing the full range of city services. Um, again, sometimes there's concerns about annexing roads, um, roads that maybe do not meet city road, um, you know, front road, um, standards, um, city, city road standards. And, you know, there's a recognition that that road is not going to be able to, you know, be widened. Uh, so there's, there's recognition for that, um, for that it's not going to be, uh, improved right away to city standards, those sort of things. Um, I think there could be, there's probably some instances where a city, um, would annex only for certain services if, um, another agency is providing to others. Uh, let's say there's a fire protection district, they're not going to provide fire services or if there's other, some other contracts, um, with another service provider through like a county service area, then they wouldn't provide those, those services to that area. And then the last, um, yes, with regard to, um, kind of charity picking or, or following roads then to grab an area that is discouraged, um, and LAFCO reviews and, you know, make sure that, um, annexation boundaries follow lines of assessment are logical. Our LAFCO's role is logical down.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go online to public comment, this will be, I believe you had, had your hand raised? Can you hear us? Okay, I'm gonna move on and as Paula comes back, we'll, um, we'll go ahead and add her comments. Uh, with that, I'll bring it back to the council, any additional thoughts or comments on?
Yes, yeah, I, one more question, um, it may be difficult, but how bad does your water have to be before you're eligible for a media hookup and later annexations? how bad does your water have to be before you're eligible for immediate hookup and later annexations?
We typically, um, it's a, we typically will want to have, um, county department of environmental health, um, come out to the property and review the system. It's typically either, um, a low, you know, supply, if it's like a, um, you know, a, an existing, um, well that's just running dry. There's a supply issue, or there's some sort of contamination issue for water.
So environmental health would certify the need for that.
And also identify that, you know, there is an existing water line that's, you know, right there, and it would be feasible for them to collect it. So yes, and then the wastewater is, um, more common, you know, failing subject systems are very clearly a healthy issue.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes our session on annexation, and I want to thank our speaker. Thank you very much, Collette, for coming and joining us. It was really informative, and rest assured, there'll be more, probably more discussions about this topic going forward. All right, so the next item, and is, uh, the discussion decision regarding first reading of ordinance 2025-01, which is designating the fire hazard severity zone as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Act. I believe Trevor is going to give us a staff report on this item.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think this is pretty straightforward, but, you know, um, obviously, people are concerned about fire issues and things like that, but, um, it all requires, uh, CalFire to designate, um, fire hazards, severity zones. And there are, and they do that for both, um, primarily state responsibility areas, but with the uptick in, in fires, um, there's been more focus on local responsibility areas where, um, local jurisdiction has fire suppression, um, authority, and so, just in the la- last, late last year, they updated all the, um, the state responsibility area maps, and then this year, really, they're, they're coming out the, the city maps, um, for the local responsibility areas. Um, again, this is, this is all dictated by state law. Um, the city has a certain period of time to, to publish the, the maps that were, um, put out by CalFire. Um, they're all based on, um, specific modeling, and, um, the city really has no say in this, and if there's good reason to, we can, it's very, but we have no authority to decrease severity. Um, and then we have, um, you know, a certain period of time to adopt and, to adopt these designations by ordinance. So that's what this is. Um, this is the city of Trinidad, um, the, the yellow is the moderate. Um, the, the white and gray areas are federal responsibility areas, so that's the rancheria. Yellow. Um, and then the, the red is the very high, and, you know, this I found really surprising, um, because apparently their models are taking ember transmission, um, si- as a significant fire source. I don't really understand where embers are going to come from to Trinidad. And it is the only very high fire hazard severity zone on the entire process.
Yes.
It's very strict, but again, you have no say in this. Um, and it really, um, these zones, the, the moderate, doesn't really bring in any new requirements. Um, high and very high, you start to get, um, stricter building code, building permitting requirements, um, defensible space requirements, uh, water supply, ingress, egress. Um, those sorts of things start to apply in, in high and very high, but because Trinidad's head is all open space, none of those are going to apply anyway. So really, in essence, this does not affect the city, um, in terms of our, our regulations and, and, you know, people have to, um, it doesn't affect individual property owners, as, as far as I know, my understanding is this is not, this is a hazard, it's not a risk assessment, so this is, also doesn't going to affect insurance. Um, so it, it kind of is what it is. Um, and so the ordinance we're proposing as the first reading of this ordinance, it's just essentially adopting these sets.
All right, any questions from the council on this ordinance? This would be the first reading, we have that two readings in background, so this is first reading.
Just an observation, I guess we're lucky we didn't categorize it extremely dangerous.
Well.
In the, in between, very, very, you know.
Well, very high is the highest.
Are you sure?
No. It's, it's moderate, high and very, no, not, not that I know of.
I will. I think we're all a little surprised that Trinidad had, uh, rated very high, but, um, but it is what it is. Uh, any questions or comments from the commissioners and then the public, any commission comments? Oh, you want to be speak as a member of the public, okay, okay, Commissioner Johnson.
Uh, so just a question, uh, not that it necessarily is, is applicable here, but I'm just curious, the green area on the, uh, map is all Humboldt. Are there been various pieces of this which are rated differently as well?
Um, the entire Trinidad planning area is moderate.
Okay.
Right. Uh, members of the public, Mr. Hickon, and I believe you had your hand raised first.
I think, yeah, I, I don't know which I should wear to ask this question, honestly, uh, but obviously I'm triggered. Critical infrastructure, right, radio towers, that kind of stuff, there's spade drills, as well, letters that county repeater there. How does, if you know, how does this map impact that, uh, citizens to protect or to create the additional obligation on the city for defensible space? Because, you know, if, if this is a high severity area, uh, and I believe part of what the city manager share in the areas with the egress concern, it just makes me think about that as an obligation to the city, and think about fire protection needs. With the county radio site would be quite devastating, uh, based off, it's, it's, having been a large campfire professionally, that's a spot where resources get sent on purpose to protect. Do you have any thought on that?
I, that's a good question, and not to my knowledge, most of the requirements that I know of, um, apply to habitable structures. Um, but it's certainly, I think, something that the city could talk with the, the county and, and fire departments with in terms of what should be done, um, to keep that, that space safe. Um, and certainly, you know, there's the federal areas where they can, they can do their own education management. But open space areas, environmentally sensitive habitat areas, which are, that is, are generally exempt from.
I, I can't see online if there are any, uh, folks with hands raised, so let me know. Any, any, uh, comments online? No, it's okay. Let's bring it back then to the council, and, um, uh, any additional questions or emotions?
I think we have to do anything on as far as the first reading.
We don't have to make a motion for a first reading, okay, is that correct?
So.
Okay, you have a right. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you should read the title instead of the whole ordinance, um. But I believe you should make the motion, and I apologize for not having the same.
Excellent, you have to approve the first reading of this, this one, that's correct. So, okay. So, do you, do they feel better?
I, I'm moving, yeah, approve the first reading.
Right, and the second?
Whatever the number of this.
Yeah, it's, uh, ordinance, well, it's the Trinidad FPHSZ ordinance, 2025-01. And Katie is seconding the approval of the first reading, all those in favor, aye? So we have approved the first reading of this ordinance, thank you very much. All right, so the next thing on our agenda, uh, which the item formally known as number two is the MOA between cities, uh, and Shrim Heights and the community of Trinidad Rancheria grant permission to include city roads on its national tribal transportation facility inventory. So we discussed this at our last meeting, and then this is coming back to us.
That's correct, Mayor, and every city council. Tonight, we have, uh, the follow-up to last month's meeting where map was, uh, we were notified the map was not complete, we have the complete map attached to your council packet, and we are asking for your approval, uh, of this item.
Hey, so let's start with the council, any questions about the, uh, Rancheria MOA? I, I had a, um, unfortunately I'm having trouble getting the map to come up quickly, but, um, they, I, should I be concerned at all about the, uh, boundaries, uh, including, for example, the Galindo Trail and, um, yeah, the Galindo Trail, and I think there's another little.
So I think this MOA, Mayor, or for the, for the point of this conversation, this MOA is only for the streets.
Okay, okay, so it doesn't matter whether.
Yeah, it's the streets inventory, and it's their ability to go out and, uh, get grants based on, uh, projects they see have netted to their properties and being able to help repair and rebuild streets.
Yeah, okay, great, that's what I thought, thank you. All right, any other questions from the council? Okay, are there any questions from members of the public regarding the Rancheria MOA? It's David.
It's related and Joe may have sensitive, oh, sorry, I mentioned David, it's a little vector.
Thank you.
Uh, I just noticed that the, the map, it's funny that we saw it back to back, the map was different in the fire hazard for that, for this area than it is in this thing, and I just feel like, I'm just feeling a little confused. But it sounds like we're sure that there's no implication to this, that maybe there's some other things that I, I don't know, or assumptions in here that we're finding ourselves to, I guess that's what I'm interested in.
Nothing that council won't have the ability to weigh in on, it's just approving the map of streets that connect to the Rancheria properties.
Thanks, yeah, I wasn't very clear, I was, I was looking at the tribal boundary in this document, and it's really not relevant, because we're actually talking about the streets on the map. So that was my, um, kind of going a little too deep on it. Uh, any other public comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council then.
All of them, uh, approve the, the letter that was in the packet, essentially agreeing to cooperate with listing the city roads as also tribal roads.
Okay. All second, since I haven't seconded for a while, and all those, all those in favor? Aye. The move, thank you. All right, the next item is a discussion decision regarding the contract with Humboldt County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services to the city of Trinidad. So I'll turn it over to Joe for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, we have for your discussion and approval, the FY 25-26, uh, Sheriff's Animal Control Services. On this is part, uh, items three and four on your agenda. Uh, up for your discussion right now is item three, it's the sheriff's agreement. Uh, good news with the sheriff's agreement is, uh, this, there is a $7,000 reduction, $7,000 reduction from previous year. So that's the good news, uh, there is a slight increase for the animal control services of about $936, but overall savings of $6,400 between the two. So, uh, services are not going to be diminished, uh, and it have the same, uh, lieutenant in call is still going to be our lieutenant from McKinleyville, uh, said they're fully staffed and have done a long time, and animal control services and the shelter group is included in this contract. So happy to answer your questions if you have any.
All right, council, any questions about the, uh, this is the law enforcement agreement, we're not, we're talking about animal control next.
So I read it over very carefully, actually caught a couple of typos in the agreement that's already signed, so too late to correct those, but, um, I think it's great, we've got, uh, their services, and you get a reduced fee this, this time around.
Yeah, I think it's the same, it's the same pretty much agreement we had last year.
It is, there, there was some question about risk of the sheriff's offices asking us to accept, uh, there is some discussion among our risk management agency there. I discussed this at length with them, and our city attorney, and they feel that the risk is manageable, and we're going to communicate.
Okay. Yeah, and that was the same before as well.
Uh, we're going to continue with our, uh, Pacific Security.
Yes.
We don't end up with an aggregate more service than we had.
We will end up with, um, law enforcement's, it's the same, but for less cost, and then Pacific Security, I believe, is the same.
But we're asking them for costs right now for the upcoming budget, we'll have that discussion in May, here.
But in terms of service.
Close costs, that's correct.
All right, uh, there are no other questions from the council, I'm going to the commission and the public. Any questions regarding the law enforcement agreement? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
We approve the First Amendment to the agreement with the Humboldt County Sheriff to provide law enforcement. We're going to do animal control next.
Yeah, we'll do animal control next, is there a second for law enforcement? Perry is seconding all those in favor, aye? And thank you for the, um, thank you, Bryce.
Aye.
I see. And I, and I wanted to thank Joe for, uh, getting this, uh, done again, and I didn't even lower costs. And we got a great deal last year, so this is, this is even better, so.
It's always good when.
Fantastic.
Law enforcement, law enforcement, that doesn't happen very often in my time.
I know. Yeah, it's really, really rare.
Pretty remarkable.
Yeah.
And, and no lowering of services, so.
That's exactly, yeah, same service level agreement.
Right.
All right, so the next item is, uh, the discussion decision to approve contracts with Humboldt County Sheriff to provide animal control and shelter services to the city.
Mayor and members of the council, we have, uh, tonight for your discussion and decision approval, animal control services and animal shelter within the city of Trinidad, uh, uh, by Humboldt County for the fiscal year, uh, 24, 25 through 26, 29. So this is a three-year agreement, this is the first year of the three-year agreement, and that's what these costs are addressing. Uh, a slight increase of 938 for animal, $938 for animal control services, but as I said earlier, it's an overall savings for the animal control services and sheriff's office of $6,400. So a little bit of an increase for animal control services, much, uh, during the shared services that we get.
Yeah, the great thing is, in the past, you know, before last year's contract with animal control, we just had a, a, uh, what do you call it, a track, drive, like, we had, at the animal shelter, we had a spot for one animal, right, kennel. Um, but now with the new, the second agreement, then we have also animal control services within the city, which we didn't have before, so that was really great addition last year. So the fact that we have not only the kennel and animal services, but we also have an animal control agreement is, you know, was additive. And so, uh, so I'm a fan of this, I think it's great, given some of the issues we've had with off-leash dogs and things.
Yeah, I agree, Mayor, and I would say that I have seen the animal control services officer in town in your truck. I would also ask the residents and visitors who are listening and hear that if you have an issue with an animal that's off-leash or something that concerns you, please call 911, and they will come out and respond to your concerns, and then you will have a record of a misbehaving animal or human. That will help the animal control officer make better decisions going forward, if they have the same call, the same address, or the same animal.
Yeah, so 911, if it's an aggressive dog, this is not. Yeah, so nine one one, if it's an aggressive dog, this is not.
Yeah, I think I want to just call McKinleyville Sheriff's Office, and I talked with Lieutenant Paul about it, we had this weekend, he followed up on it, by the time I got here, the person was on site, but there was still. Not a person identified.
Okay.
Yes, I have a question, I I know we had talked on council before about the city hall also keeping records and encouraging the residents to. Call the city hall if there is.
Yeah.
The dog off leash or aggressive dog, so that our records can help us.
I would encourage them to call the sheriff's office, that's a better record, it's it's the animal control services officer is the one who's gonna make the decision on what to do with the animal, and if they don't have a complete record, it's harder for them to make a good decision. So I I will say to call animal control services and or the sheriff's office to have better service and a better end result.
Um, I I don't have a further one, is this something, since it is a departure from work, and we had to steer the animal advisory committee and and the council had discussed, can we take it back to the committee and?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things about the calling the office is that they're only there nine to five Monday through Friday, right? So that's one of the issues is is they will only be able to report complaints that they get during those hours. And then the other issue is calling the office first is there's not, there's not a whole, they don't have enforcement there. So essentially, if you call the office, they're then gonna turn around and call animal control. So as always, I understand that the committee, the animal advisory committee, did come up with a strategy that they, you know, like the magnets, they call the office, right, it's the office number, I believe, so you may wanna talk about that and and maybe have staff there to decide if that should continue, if your recommendation is to continue that, then we need to figure out how that would work.
Get more sense.
Yeah, like what's the process, maybe a little flow chart of how that would work for.
Well, the the. The dog, the the, Ted's finger.
Yeah, yeah.
There would have been no calling animal control up to that point, but he was known, she was known to be an aggressive dog by the neighbors.
Yeah.
So that's why, and yeah, that was the rationale.
Maybe it's both, you know, there may be an option for both, so that if if you know that there's a dog in your neighborhood that's appearing to become more aggressive, but it's not really to the point where you call animal control, there's no harm in calling city clerk and, you know, what were you gonna say, Seth, Dave or Joe?
Oh, and we're we're gonna call animal control services, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna accept.
But in this culture, you take it back.
Yeah, yeah, maybe discuss a little more based on what we just spoke about and then see if the committee agrees that that's a good process as well, if, you know, maybe we're missing something, but my my hunch is that calling the office is just a, you know, not as expedient now that we have this contract. So we may not have had this when you guys first formed, but now that we have this response.
And thinking develops, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had something really quick to add, no? What happened this weekend, we got an email, so remember, any any emails that are complaints about anything are on record. They become city records, they are something that we do well. So, as Joe mentioned, he responded by calling animal control.
So. Yeah.
Two things happened at once, number one, we got a record, number two, animal control is called.
And the person involved called, the person involved, the complainant also called nine one one in the moment though, right? Or called the sheriff's office in the moment, yeah.
So, so I think, I mean, it kind of goes both ways, if someone calls the city and we're available, we're gonna log that complaint, it's gonna be in the city's records and we can. Generalize it by criteria, all complaints, I think, so we respond.
And we'll call the sheriff's office on that.
Yeah, without belaboring this point, but I know you're gonna be meeting the animal advisory committee later this month. The experience that I've had on a number of occasions calling animal control is that I get a voicemail. So I think it's really imperative, what Joe said is call nine one one, if you've got a dog coming at you, don't, you know, or is aggressive, don't even bother calling animal control online, so, and and within we will have a good record, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so we're we're digressing a bit, but this is about the animal agreement. Is there anything else in the agreement that anyone would like to ask questions about or change from the council perspective? It's good, okay, I'm gonna go to the public, any questions or comments from the public? Please, a member of the animal advisory committee.
And and to steal from Aaron, I'm I'm wearing that hat, I think, at the moment. Um, to add on to actually what Katie was saying, um, I think some of the, in general, this is pretty, it seems to have maybe helped a little bit, and I think back in like September-ish minutes, it might reflect that I'm not, I can't remember exactly when we talked about it, but we actually had someone from animal control come and talk, speak with us and kind of clarify how they saw the relationship with us. Now, this may have completely changed because it's been six months and you've had conversations and disagreements and all kinds of stuff. But the the idea that kind of people call, that city call was actually the result of, I'm essentially saying, but we're not gonna show up for the public use since, and we're probably not gonna show up if it's potentially aggressive. We will show up for aggressive, or what they call. That kind of three tiers system of classification. And so, there was sort of this idea, and Katie, I think you were just adding a little context to what you were saying, this idea of with instance that happened with Ted, where, hey, if people, if there would have just been a record somewhere, particularly with the city, so then, because. What the concern is, is not so much, I don't know if there's a whole lot that could have been done for the Ted's situation, which was, I mean, it could have, but then the next situation that happened beyond that, then you could have, so that was kind of the context of that discussion. That may not be one of the things I think that the committee is still looking at, backflow is like, does this make sense for city staff to take this on, and we never got really a firm answer on where the other on that, we kind of got a. Yeah, I got maybe, and so. Okay, but anyways, might be something that we can maybe talk about on this one and and or one after, whatever is the right time to organize it, but there's a little additional context on that, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, we will bring that back to every.
Um, and it may be worth talking about animal control again, the county, again, to clarify, make sure we understand your comments from before versus anywhere it is now, I don't know. Yeah, um, the second, actually, question I got, this is more of just a clarification, I'm asking if we're suggesting a change, but just something I was curious about, um, in section three of the animal control services, um. It kind of, I'm I'm just a little confused as to as to what subsection D means versus what the last kind of paragraph in there says, so. Uh, sub, subsection B says enforcement city ordinance is really the animal control. But then, after that said, the sheriff shall not be required to assume any enforcement function, any enforcement duty or function consistent with those performed by the sheriff under the ordinances of the county and the statutes of the state of California. And why I'm very curious about this, and again, if this is the wrong form, and we can take a different form, happy to. Maybe I'll talk about it later.
Yeah, I think.
But, um, what what's really interesting about that is the county doesn't have a leash law. And we do. And so I'm not sure how. I mean, Katie, correct if I'm wrong, but I think you were actually the one that sort of pointed this out, the 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 counties have a leash law. So when they come into town, are they even able to enforce a leash law as it is?
So my understanding is if they enforce our municipal code, yes, there is no municipal code of ours, so you can force them to apply.
Yeah, and then to your point, Andrew, when it says the sheriff shall not be required to assume any enforcement duty or function inconsistent with those performed by the sheriff, I think what they're trying to say there is like, if we said, we we want the person to be shackled if their dog was off leash, that's inconsistent with their their methodology, right, I can't think of a good example, but, um, so they won't do anything that's inconsistent with with their normal law enforcement duties. Um, so they could arrest somebody, they could ticket somebody, they could do all the things that they normally do, but they can't go any, you know, i- if we had a crazy city ordinance, for example, then they would say, well, we can't enforce that. Does that make sense?
It does, it doesn't really read that way, that's why I'm a little, I still have a stretch in my head a little bit, because it feels like their leash law would would overcome our leash law, which I'm not advocating for or against or anything like that, just trying to get in my head, it's for trade, so we're thinking that's not the case.
Well, I noticed that too, involving the law enforcement agreements and the animal control.
Yeah.
And I think it really has to do with, um. What they're trying to say is if it's a case where state law preempts local law, then their hands are tied, they can't enforce the local law. I think that's what they're getting at.
It it does say or instances of counting.
Because otherwise it wouldn't make any sense.
Yeah.
And I can understand why they would say that we can't enforce a law that's been preempted by state there. So.
Makes better sense, I'm like.
Yeah, I think it's true, okay.
Okay.
Well, it's it's just important for how we consider animal advisory, like, kind of where we go next with that.
Right.
And what we can, what's even worth discussing, because if it's a moot point on the enforcement side, then it's like, what are we even talking about, so as long as we feel like we've got a coverage on that, then.
Yeah, I suppose, um, somebody could cover that, I mean. We'll go up to you, a little clarification on that, I think that's. Another for you.
So I, I mean, that's a great point, did you, do you think it's worth confirming that with them?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up, I believe I did ask this question when I first got here, and I think that they would, they said they would enforce the stricter of the rules.
That's what I.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I would also like to add that Title VII, Chapter Four, Supervisor Metron has reached out to us talking about. Leash law specifically, also the county is gonna be, they're gonna form an ad hoc committee, I think.
Yes, yeah.
About forming an ad hoc committee to look at leash laws in particular, and the county has had quite a few complaints and some concerns in a while since that's been updated, so making an opportunity to sit on the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, that would be something good to discuss at the animal advisory committee to maybe nominate someone to be on that county committee. Yeah. Yeah, that would be great. All right, thank you. Other questions from the public on the animal control agreement? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. I guess I can make a motion, I will move to approve the contract with animal control and shelter, for animal control and shelter services to the city of Trinidad from Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. And there's a second from Katie, all those in favor? Aye, so that passes unanimously. We have some questions to chase down, but otherwise it looks good. Um, we will skip five because we already did that. Uh, I don't see any staff activity report, but we.
We did that.
We, but we did that earlier, yeah, so, um, anything else on the agenda that I was missing? I think we're done, okay, future agenda items. I heard the E O P, the Emergency Operation Plan, might be something, I don't know if that needs to be agendized, though, that's probably.
It's a little ways off.
Okay. Um, I was gonna add trails, I think at some point, maybe. June, July or something, yeah, we should maybe do a trails update and get council to weigh on, weigh in on some strategies around and or maybe nominate for G two Gs with the Yoroc tribe and rancheria regarding. And TAS regarding, well, TAS is a meeting regarding, you know, trail openings and closures and things.
Yeah, I think we ought to put on the on the main agenda. Getting getting actually William Memorial Trail reopened, like we said we were gonna do on Memorial Day. But really, I really don't like the idea, it's temporary closures and then we always run over the.
The timeframe that we, yeah.
I I don't think there's any reason for that myself, I think our city staff could have that trail open in a couple of days for maybe three. Not not in anything that's gonna last forever, but it's certainly we get through the summer seasons, we take pressure off some of the other trails, which may be becoming more of an issue.
Let's, and let's hold the deeper discussion about for the for the agenda item, but your recommendation is to put it on the main agenda, Bryce?
I think we should, yeah.
And Joe, I believe you wanted to add something.
Yeah, I will say that we're staffs having discussions right now, we're trying to meet next week, at least a partial opening. I just, I don't see there's any way that that trail can top the bottom. Yeah, so remember, we have that.
We don't need T S, T A S's agreement.
We can, we can open it.
All right, so I'm gonna.
We'll take it on a minute, we'll have it on.
Let's let's have it on the agenda and have this debate discussion at that time, because I think there's a lot of, yeah, a lot of input that we'll we'll be getting about that. We have budget, did that remind me, we are, yeah, so it's a budget meeting, and so it is pretty full, so talking about trails. Could be challenging, but to Bryce's point, we did say Memorial Day, well. We didn't, the former city manager.
I'm not counting.
Okay, okay. And I apologize, I started something that reminded me of something, but now I don't.
The next step with annexation.
The next step with annexation, so that could be a future agenda, I think the question is gonna be um, looking at the specific areas that have been outlined by the planning commission in the past and determining whether the council wants to move ahead with an annexation recommendation for any of those areas. And that could be just Mill Creek, for example, for water service provisioning. It could be down Patrick's Point Drive, which was another area, I believe, and then there's another one that I don't remember offhand, so. I know it's like West Haven and beyond.
I I didn't want to, I don't understand why the city doesn't vote, just the annex, propose annex.
Because they're the ones that are impacted.
But annexing affects the city.
True, and at that point, the city residents could come to the council, right? Do, do, is I, am I correct, you guys, or?
Yeah, the process is set up by state law, so we don't really have. You know, it's just the way it is.
Logical, too.
I, yeah, I understand your point, but from the state's perspective, it's logical the way they do it.
Okay.
Because if if a certain, a group that's continuous with the city petitions and wants to become part of the city, they don't think the existing resident should be able to say, oh, no, we don't want you guys, we don't, yeah, we don't want you guys.
Okay, we're getting into it again, so I'm gonna. Uh, but your question is a good one, and I think we will, those will be the next step, would be, and I, timeframe wise, I think we're looking at, you know, summer, late, late summer, maybe early fall, it could be sooner.
But.
Just because of everything we have.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I think that is it, we are adjourned, thank you everybody.